Email. That one has to see.
It is six thirty, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I call to order the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One Board Meeting. We do have a quorum. All directors are present, and we're going to go to citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics or your statement of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Lori?
No.
Do you want to say anything, Jeff? Okay. Got it. Okay. Reports and updates. Number one, staff reports, A, capital improvement projects, B, water operations reports, C, wastewater systems reports, D, finance reports, and E, digital platform analytics. Alan?
Good evening, directors. A few updates for tonight. The fiscal year 2023 water line project, we'll be discussing that in further detail, a little bit further in the agenda, requesting that award. Our high service pump station, we had a ninety percent workshop. Those plans have been submitted to TCEQ for preliminary approval, and if everything goes according to plan and there's no holdups, we hope to start advertising in June for that project. If not, it may get pushed out to July. MBR piping improvement projects, that project is complete, wrapped up. The only thing we have left to do is final documentation and final payment. Everything is working as designed and intended, and we're very happy and pleased with that. Lift station number one, we had a walkthrough on that today internally and went out and did a checklist on that for punch list items. That station is in full operation right now, and we're not having any major issues. That project is basically complete, barring punch list items and final documentation. It may take another month or two to get all that wrapped up, but essentially it's complete. Wastewater system improvements, that project's going well. The contractor was able to get in here early and take out a lot of the heavy cleaning and CCTV efforts. They were able to save some of their time, which in return saved us some money on the project overall so far. We do have twenty-five point repairs identified on the project, and they're supposed to start working on those in the next few weeks. Going to finance reports on pages.
General manager?
Yes.
Can we go back to lift station generators? Just a quick question. We're going to put in eight diesel generators. I know that the horsepower of the various lift pumps is different. Are the generators different in size?
Yes, there are different varying sizes now. For example, there are generally standardized sizes, so you may have a forty, fifty, sixty kilowatt, then they jump to a larger size. What they did is they sized each generator to each site specific or the rating of those pumps themselves. So each one of them is going to have a generator, but each one of them may have a different size depending on what it is. But instead of it needing a fifty or fifty-five horsepower, they just went ahead and stocked a sixty kilowatt hour because it's more standard, it's more common, and you'll save a little bit more cost for that.
Okay.
And they'll switch over power automatically?
They're going to have automatic transfer switches, yes.
That's the expense, that's a very expensive switch.
The generator, it is a very expensive switch, yes.
Alan, will they switch over power automatically?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then, do we have a maintenance schedule for those?
We will. We will. So currently, we do, we have a maintenance schedule already that's typically done later in the year, along with our pumps and motors. Whenever we get the project done, we'll just add this to our annual list and budget.
Okay. And on the completion of the project, our landscape is back to normal?
On which project?
One, lift station.
Lift station one. So the sod has been in place in the individual's front yards. They have some reseeding to do out on the golf course property that they're working on. That's one of their punch list items.
So all the residents are satisfied?
As of today, yes. And we're going to make sure that the residents that were affected sign off on something saying that they're satisfied as well.
And just give Ben's address?
I think that they already know where his address is.
Let me, let me add a happy note. My neighbor across the street that granted access to the heavy equipment to get back to lift one had his driveway torn up yesterday and removed. This morning, they were out there at seven o'clock, they put rebar in and the concrete mixer, cement mixer showed up, and that driveway is in and looking great. Neighbor is very happy.
Continue on.
Okay. Looking at pages thirty-six and thirty-seven of the packet, the financials, we added explanation of the activity of the fund balance sheets for clarity. One of the questions that Secretary Treasurer and I have had over the past few months and even with Stephen is, how do you come to these numbers? We see activity, but how do you come to those numbers? Well, barring three hundred sheets of detailed accounting spreadsheet information, we added this information off of his recommendation for that clarity, and he seems pleased with it, and we hope that it explains the reason why those balances change on a monthly basis and makes it simpler for everybody to understand. So I wanted to make sure that I pointed that out to you all.
You happy with those?
I'm very happy.
Good job, Steve.
Also, digital platform analytics. Last month, there was a request to add these into this month's packet, so we've provided the website and Facebook activity year-to-date. So with that being said, the question now is, are we going to continue to have this information on a monthly basis, or are we going to do this annually? How, is this something that y'all are going to want? Or is this a one-time?
Thirty-six.
Let's see, the analytics.
Page sixteen.
No, analytics is someplace else.
Page sixteen is the website analytics that you requested?
Sixteen.
And then, starting on page seventeen is the performance analytics for the community outreach program, the education initiative program.
On the website users, obviously, that includes the people that log on to bill, pay the bill?
That's correct, and that is year-to-date.
Okay.
So if we show you monthly activity, those numbers will be more than likely very minimal.
Well, I would assume that it's going to be, you know, about the same every month.
Going, going to the billing side is the most frequent, yes.
And then, direct, organic, where they deem an organic search?
Someone types in Trophy Club. I believe that our website may come up, so they, I believe that's the, that's the interpretation of that. Someone just basically accidentally goes to that site.
Who's creating this report?
Steve Durman with Foreman Furnace created this for us. He pulled the meta dashboard, but it's so, there's just so much there, I asked him to try to clean it up a little bit and provide the same information in a better format, so.
What do you guys think, quarterly, it's sufficient? Or?
It's a new program. I'd like to see it every month until we're stabilized, and he's got a lot, he was talking about three new videos that have been shot with Scott over at the golf course. I'd like to, during this start, you know, I'd like to see it on a monthly basis.
So what we can do on the community outreach, so we're all in agreeance that the website doesn't necessarily need to be on there every month?
Okay, okay.
Or do you want the website?
Yeah, I'd agree with that. What is the video, what category is that under?
Okay, so it's going to be under the community outreach. Starting on page seventeen, you'll see static posts that were made, and then you'll see posts that included a video as well. So for example, on page twenty was the very first video content that we posted, and then it talks about the details of engagements and reach. So every single post that was made, whether it was static or reminder or video, it has all of that information there.
Appreciate that information.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and continue to add the community outreach information in based off of post activity, but remove the website analytics. Is that correct?
Well, you could probably put the website every quarter and put the, what Ben wanted, monthly until, as you said, it gets up to speed. It's just.
So quarterly website, monthly on outreach.
Everybody agree with that?
The effort that he has to put in to provide this report, is it substantial? Is it one hour?
I'm guessing it's not that much. I would assume an hour.
No, it's not that much.
It probably takes him longer to format it and make it presentable.
And now he just has to fill in the numbers, so keep the same.
Well, the number, yeah, pretty much, and then he'll change out the image from the post itself.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody agree with that, right?
Yes. Okay, one more thing. Let me take this note, I'm sorry.
Need Otter AI.
What?
Or AI. You wouldn't have to write anything.
Do you want to bring up the request I did on the budget, or, you know, as far as the reserves that, for, you know, I called Alan about the reserves. We have like, what, ten million plus, Stephen?
Right.
Total reserves. They're in buckets throughout the budget, okay? Some of the buckets, we don't need, what was it, three million in rate impact?
Roughly one point one in rate stabilization, five hundred thousand in emergency, we've got another one point eight in M and R, but some of it's previously allocated.
Well, you can't touch the allocated.
And Gatsby's a two point nine. Correct. Gatsby's the heftiest, that and our general operating.
But we just need to look at the budget, the buckets, if they're being used, it's fine, keep the reserves in there, but if we don't need that much reserves, you know?
Yeah, that was part of, when we set the buckets up, was determining how much would be in each reserve, you know? And so it was ba, I mean, there's something in that policy that says how, how that reserve is determined, and if you want to change, you know, if you want to change how it's determined, then that would just be an adjustment in the policy.
Okay.
So we're going to talk about the cash reserve policy next month, and then we'll also go ahead and select budget committee members as well.
I mean, five, six years ago, we operated, obviously things are more, but we operated on, what, six or seven million, something like that, Stephen? Do you remember?
We were a little bit less than that, five years, six years ago.
But times have changed, things are increased, but still, I don't think we need ten, a little over ten million in reserves. We just need to revisit it. Again, if they need to be there in a bucket, that's fine, but it needs to be justified rather than building reserves up to have money sitting there when we could reduce rates or use it for other things.
Usually when we do, when we do our first draft budget, we'll bring this up, and we'll take a look at what's in there and see where we need to allocate it.
That's fine.
But we're going to go ahead and start that process next month.
Yeah.
One other thing before we move on, I want to remind everybody that early voting begins next Monday, April twenty-fourth, and continues through May second, and with Election Day being on Saturday, May sixth. I didn't make sure I threw that out there, so.
And I know you sent an email out on the properties I asked regarding taxing.
Three oh one and three oh six trophy branch, yes.
They weren't being taxed.
That's correct.
A couple of months ago, I brought it to Alan's attention. He's been researching it, running the buy-in from, what I understand, Tarrant County and the law. According to our attorney, say, you can't go back and get the back taxes from like two thousand and eight. Those properties have been sliding, oh yeah, it's like forty-three thousand dollars.
Big numbers.
Well, and for clarification, too, it's sections of the properties that were omitted. So the properties three oh one and three oh six were originally two larger parcels. Back in two thousand and eight, they were split apart into four or six different parcels. So the larger portions, the district has been receiving taxes from, and that has never stopped. But some of the smaller portions were omitted from the tax base when Tarrant County changed their maps years ago.
Well, Tarrant County and Denton County had a border dispute, and that's probably about two thousand and eight, don't you think, Bill?
That's when it occurred.
Carter was in there?
It was driven off of Dallas County, wasn't it? I mean, because the Tarrant, the Tarrant and Denton County line was based off of a point on the Dallas County line, and there was a court case over that county, and then they moved it, and when they moved it, then they moved our line.
Yeah, because we used to go on the other side of one fourteen.
Yeah.
And then they said, okay, use one fourteen, and then they came back and said, no, we'll use within Trophy Club borders, so that's why some of the houses are in Tarrant, and some are, most of them are in Denton County. Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, that's all I have for you.
That's all you got?
That's it, that's it right now, yes.
You can go on another minute, so I can take a drink of water.
Feel free.
Okay. Thank you very much for those, that information. Okay, we can go to consent agenda. All matters listed on consent agenda are considered to be routine by the board of directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be moved from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have agenda number two, consent agenda, consider and act to approve the consent agenda. A, March twenty twenty-three combined financials. B, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. C, quarterly investment report, second quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and D, tax collection report, second quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Does anyone want to remove any of these items, A, B, C, or D? I see none. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll do it.
Okay, Ms. Director Rose.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through D, with item B being March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes as amended at the dais.
And that would be consisting of a vote count, correct?
Correction on a vote count.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a motion by Director Rose to approve the consent agenda, A, B, C, and D. Do I have a second?
One second.
Wow, Secretary Treasurer Harper, second. Okay. Any, anything else on that? Okay, we're going to vote on it. All in favor, show of hands. Okay, unanimous? Okay. Okay, moving on. Regular session, agenda item three, discussion and possible action regarding financial reports.
Okay, directors, I'd like to draw your attention back to page one of the agenda packet, and if you'll notice, under reports and updates, we have financial reporting. I am uncertain why, but we also, since I've been here, have had combined financials, quarterly investment reports, tax collection reports, any kind of financial reports have always been under consent agenda. These are, in fact, reports, and there's no necessary consent needed because there's nothing to approve. So all I'm requesting tonight is that, moving forward, we combine that information and show it as a staff report instead of being under consent agenda. I'm uncertain why those are there. There's no legal means for them to have to be in consent, and even part of our conversations as Secretary Treasurer and I've had, there's, it's hard to understand how you could approve something that's a report. So it's just really for clarity for the board and to make sure that all the reports are put together as reports. And so I seek direction.
So you want to combine the reports?
Yes, please. I want to move them from consent, which they're normally at, and move them into reports and updates section of the agenda.
Anyone have any problem with that?
I don't know if there is a legal reason that they're down there. So if we have legal counsel that says there's no reason for them to be down there, then I don't have a problem with the locations.
Emily, do you mind speaking to that, please?
Yeah, there is no legal reason to have them separated as you have. Only if you need to approve some sort of budgetary item, like a budget change, or approve an amount that's not already delegated to the general manager, do you need to have it that way. So really, if it's just reporting, there's no reason to have it as a consent item, as having it y'all's approval.
Thank you.
Did you answer? Okay, anyone else have any problem?
No, I totally support it, too, because we're, we're actually approving a report that we would have, it would take a lot of documentation and the spreadsheet sorting and sifting to show how these numbers actually change. That's the problem I've had since, as I've been on the board, is we're approving this financial report that we just don't, we can't see what Steve sees, how these numbers get changed. Now, the footnotes explains a lot of it, and, and I think it's very beneficial, but yeah, yeah, I don't think we should, as a board, approve these financials the way. I totally support moving them off of the consent agenda, but it's nice to see the information in a report, but the board shouldn't approve something that they can't understand.
Can't validate.
Yes, can't validate.
Okay, this, this is on the agenda for discussion, possible action. We can give direction without taking a vote, is that correct, Emily?
You can take a vote because it has possible action on it, so if you wanted to vote to move it off a consent agenda, that, that's fine, but it doesn't, it doesn't make, you can give direction as well without a vote.
Okay, we'll just vote on it since it's saying, taking action, so.
So the ones that are moving are the combined financials, the quarterly investment report, and tax collection report?
Anything that's considered a report, we're going to put it under reports and updates.
Yeah, just trying to build a motion.
Sorry.
Okay. I, I moved it henceforth that the combined financial reports, the quarterly investment reports, and the tax collection reports be carried under staff reports.
Okay, I have a motion by Director Rose to combine the reports and move them under staff reports, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second that.
That's two in a row, you know?
That's, that's my quota for the night.
Pace yourself, okay? Pace yourself there. Okay, I have a second by Secretary Treasurer Harper. Any questions on it? That's what you needed, Alan?
Yes, please.
Okay, call for a vote. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're up to agenda item, item four, discussion and possible action regarding emergency fire station repairs.
Okay, directors, if you recall, late December last year, there was a delivery truck offloading some fire hoses and some other materials to the fire station. The trucking company, the trucker backed into one of the columns between two of the bay doors, creating enough damage to where the doors had to be put out of service, and they're currently not usable. So not to read every single bullet point here that I provided, but the town staff and us, we agreed to how that was going to be coordinated and handled. They've been proactive on trying to get quotes and working through Mohave. Mohave was unresponsive. We went ahead and reached out to TML, used quotes and information that they had received from a reputable contractor. They've been pushing it through the process. We received payment from TML, submitted that to the town, assuming that they were proceeding along, speaking with the fire chief. They actually had a pre-construction meeting set for this week, but then late last week, we found out that the town legal counsel requested that the money be paid at this dollar amount, be approved by the board and overseen by the district. So essentially, we'll be stepping in to see the high level of it, overseeing and assisting with inspection, and oversight of payment to that contractor as well. So we're requesting this tonight as emergency repair, and again, the door is still inoperable, and a few things to consider are, if you look at the materials that are needed, some of the fascia and brick, that's about nine weeks out, once they get the notice to proceed, the contractor is ready to go and waiting, and as soon as this gets approved, we'll likely have a pre-construction meeting with them to proceed with those repairs.
Okay, from, the check was issued to the town initially, is that correct?
No, the check was issued to the district.
Okay.
But as part of the previously set agreement between town staff and the district, they had agreed to take care of overseeing the operations. We would make sure that they got the funding, whether it came from Mohave Trucking or from TML. So we received payment minus our deductible, we submitted a check to them so they could go ahead and proceed with the construction.
Okay, and then how did they come about the contractors that bid on this?
I, I don't know the answer to that. My understanding is it's a contractor that either some town staff have used before, they reached out to them, they're readily available to give a quote. I don't know where they got that contractor from.
How long is this project going to take?
Six weeks, once they start construction is what their estimate is. That's when all the materials are received.
Has anyone vetted this contractor other than someone, I saw some write-ups?
From the town, obviously the town, this is a contractor that someone from the town has used, that's.
Yeah, what I'm getting at, it's our building.
Understood.
It's our structure, obviously, we would have to oversee it.
Correct.
With the help of the fire chief, obviously, you know, to make sure that everything is being taken care of, they don't damage anything down there. But, you know, we need to at least vet the contractor. It looks like they were the cheapest one, correct?
I, I don't know. This is the, this is the information that we were provided by the town. This is what the claim was based off, was this quote and contractor. My understanding from town staff is this is someone that has been used before.
Yeah, because the insurance company, or just, you know, they'll get it back from the transportation, but the insurance company owes to bring it back to the way it was before.
Correct, and that's what this is.
And we just need to make sure that we buy off on it, and that there's nothing, the door goes up and down, there's warranties on the motor, on the doors, and things like that, and then the brick matches.
Correct.
So, not that I have any knowledge of this business, but that's what has to happen.
Understood, and when you dig down the details for someone that's understanding of instruction, it's, it's fairly detailed, but it's not anything that we can't make sure gets fixed correctly.
Okay, and do we have any out-of-pocket expense on this?
A thousand dollar deductible at this time.
And that should be reimbursed by the transportation?
That's what we're trying to do. So TML has filed a subrogation claim, so they're going to be looking at trying to seek the money from the trucking company on our behalf.
Yeah, well, we need to get that money back. Bill?
Motion.
Yeah, anyone, yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
I move to approve the emergency fire station repairs by UST GC LLC in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Rose. Do I have a second? No, Doug's taking a break, okay, so.
I'll second.
Okay, Tracy Hunter, Director Hunter seconds the motion. Okay, any discussion? Is this company bonded, the construction?
Make sure that they have all the bonding and insurance requirements before they start.
Good, and then any warranty work if the, as I said, if the door doesn't go up and down, and I'm just surprised it's taken from December to even start this job.
Well, if you go back through the timeline, you can see why we were trying to give the trucking company the benefit of the doubt. They were unresponsive, that's why we made the decision to reach out to our insurance provider.
The way I look at it is, it's a fire station. It's, you know, they need to have that door open and close, and they put the ambulances behind that with the older ambulance, and then the newer one, they go out the back way, but it's a fire station. It's not like, you know, it's not being used. So, and Tracy, with your politicking thing, that's, that's a key thing, is like, okay, you don't have the access in and out of that, you know, they got to go around the back, which they can go out the back, too, but it just amazes me, it takes that long to get it done. Okay, I have a motion and a second by Director.
Brick matching is, is an art.
Understood.
Is that brick going to be, how well will it match, and is there a chance to paint it?
No, you don't want to paint brick.
The way that this is set up in this quote is that they are going to try to find the closest brick to match. So there may be some variation, but I don't think that it will be that noticeable.
Psychologically pleasing.
Correct, that's the intent.
Okay. Again, we have a motion by Director Rose, second by Director Hunter. Any further discussion? I see none. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. That brings us to agenda item number five, consider and take, consider and act regarding approval of contract number two zero two three zero four one nine zero one for replacement of water lines as part of fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvement projects.
Directors, as you're well aware, a few years ago, we started our annual water line replacement program, and during this last year's budget process and asset management discussions, we made the decision to try to replace at least one mile of pipe every year, five thousand two hundred and eighty feet. So this year's current budget, we had one point four million dollars budgeted for this project. With cost savings on other projects and reallocation of CIP money, we've been. we've been able to reallocate that towards the annual water line replacement project. So we have $1.57 million sitting in there, ready to go for this year's project. We did design this earlier in the year, bid it out for construction. This project includes 5,893 linear feet of eight-inch, six-inch, and two-inch water lines to be removed and replaced. That does include valves, service lines, along and adjacent to Sunset Drive, Berkshire Court, Lee Court, Riviera Court, and Skyline Drive. We advertised, and a public bid opening was held on April 10th. And we received seven bids, which is great, because I think last year we received one. And the contractor was vetted out by our engineering consultant, and they are recommending awards. So that's why we have this here tonight.
Okay, so they recommend that J and L?
Yes.
Is there a start-finish date?
So this is a six-month project. As soon as we get this approved, we'll get all the documentation put together. My intent is to have them starting as soon as we can in May. And they have a six-month window to get it done, so it's done and wrapped up by October.
No frozen lines.
We shorten, we shorten the window. Last year, they had a nine-month window. We shortened it up to make sure that they get it done as soon as possible.
No frozen lines.
That's correct.
No frozen lines.
We can.
What?
No frozen lines.
That's the intent.
Motion when you're ready.
If there, this is also barring any kind of rain days or anything else that may happen. So just keep that in mind as well.
Okay, do we go and take pre-construction photos of the people's yards and stuff?
Yes, that's part of the contractor's requirement, is to go through and take video and pictures of everything before they start construction, so they can verify that they didn't do the damages.
And you said they were already vetted and they're obviously bonded, because their probably contractor doesn't, with other cities like Red Oak and Segalville?
That's correct, and Gainesville.
Okay.
And how, how were these locations where we're going to replace the water line, how were they chosen?
They're based off of age and the pipe and material type.
And we had, we've had repair work there?
If they have repair, that helps us to determine. So the Skyline portion is one that has had multiple repairs, that's why it's on there. It's had the most repairs per location on this. The rest of it is based off of age.
Yeah, Skyline's due, I don't know if it's the soil there, whatever that road is.
Plus the type of pipe, that AC pipe, it kind of tends to do beam breaks, and it just kind of snaps. So when there is a lot of movement in the earth, it will make it snap.
We had the manhole cover years back, remember Mike? The manhole in the middle of the cul-de-sac there, down Skyline? Remember that?
It floated?
Yeah, I think so, something like that. That road has a lot of repairs on it. And to answer your question, I mean, we have a maintenance program. They go around and check the lines and stuff, so. And like the courts he mentioned, they're usually in the older side, is that correct, Mike?
Yeah.
The older side of the mud.
Yeah, so this section of Skyline, it's going to replace all of the AC pipe on Skyline Drive. The rest of Skyline is all C900 plastic pipe.
Yeah.
EVC.
Now, the AC pipe, there's protocol, once it's taken out of the ground, is that covered up or?
It has to be disposed at appropriate landfill.
Okay.
Your backyard?
Yeah, not in my backyard. And they say it's, it can be dangerous to scratch it or?
It's the dust that's created from it whenever you cook, because it takes that pipe material and makes a dust, and it's, can be toxic.
Some of these contractors are way.
I went by, I went by last year's project, and they had a lot of the old pipe just piled up.
Correct.
In the side of the street, not covered or anything.
And when it's sitting there in that state, it's not harmful. It's when you cut the material, and it creates that powder and dust. That's, that's what creates the potential.
The board director goes over there and tries to knock off a piece of it?
Don't go scraping it with your pocket knife and then breathing in the dust.
Billy, have a motion.
I do. I move to award contract number 2023041901 for replacement of water lines as part of the fiscal year 2023 capital improvement projects to J and L Construction for an amount not to exceed $1,543,178 and authorize the general manager to execute any necessary documents.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Rose, do I have a second?
Vice President Brewster seconds.
Okay, thanks for identifying yourself. Okay, we have a second by Mr. Brewster. And any further discussion?
I have one item.
Go ahead.
I did the math on this. This is $261.87 per linear foot. I think the last one we did was $280 and something. I didn't go back and look at it. But this may be due to the two-inch, two-inch piping rather than the larger, but.
Well, that's correct, and there are some savings with that. But if you go back pre-COVID, we were paying 165.
I know.
And that's how bad the economy has taken effect.
Yeah, it was, because some of the projects, you know, it looked at, you know, we looked and priced and estimated, and they were way low because the construction costs had gone so high. I'm just happy to see the number coming down.
Well, as I said, some of those bids were, you know, a million higher.
Yeah.
It's like crazy.
A lot of that has to do with quantity as well. The more that we can do at one time, it helps save on overall construction costs.
Has to do with eggs too, right? The price of eggs? Okay.
I think it was Pebble Beach.
Okay, we have a motion, did we vote on that one?
No.
I don't think so. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on item number five. All in favor, show of hands? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, number six, consider an act regarding approval of well number three rehabilitation and pump replacement.
Good evening, directors. So this project was budgeted as a part of fiscal year 2023 water maintenance and repair budget. This is for well number three, which is actually located right here at the water plant. This is to pull the old pump and motor and replace it, do some downhole inspections, and also set some charges down there to break up the formation and everything that may be calcified on the well screen, so we can start getting some more water out of this well. We performed this on well number four, I believe, two years ago, and it seemed to be performing a lot better since we've had this done. So we're asking approval for this, so we can get this started. As you can see, we did not go with the low bid on this one, only because of the post-hole, post-downhole inspection. We're trying to get as much information on these wells as we can. So we want a pre-inspection, let them break up all that material up there, and then do a post-inspection too, just to make sure everything was done properly.
You mentioned we did the same process on four, is that correct?
Correct.
Was Milliken the one that did that one too?
Yes.
Okay, so we know their work then?
Yes, I believe on that one, I think they actually had to end up putting some dynamite down that one.
What? Wow, okay. So you're recommending Milliken well service for $31,110, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do I have a motion?
You have one. I move to approve rehab, that's a good word. I move to approve rehabilitation of well number three by Milliken Well Service LLC in amount not to exceed $31,110 and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, we have a motion from Director Rose, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Vice President Ben Brewster. And do we have any discussion? I see none, all in favor, show of hands? Unanimous. Okay. Okay, we're on agenda number seven. Discussion possible action regarding amended and restated inter-local cooperation agreement for administration of fire protection services and the possible transfer of the district assets to the town of Trophy Club.
Hey, directors, while we're pulling this up, oh, it's already up, okay, good. As requested last month, you all wanted to see and discuss the potential for fire inter-local agreement. We wanted to talk about assets. So provided a handout to you here. It's one-page handout. And then we'll kind of go over this at a high level, and then please stop me and let me know if you have any questions while I'm going through this. So at the very top of your page right there, what you have is a list of current assets that the district owns. As you can see, the Pierce pumper truck was removed from the list because it was essentially traded in last year, or actually been the year before, whenever we made the purchase of the current Spartan pumper fire truck. Another thing to note is that the fire station land is included as the district's overall property. And so we went ahead and threw that in there, showing you the amount of square feet or acreage for that piece of property, so you all could see and understand what assets we're actually talking about. Going down to the middle of the page, you can see where we have projected FY 2023 district fire revenue. Basically, this is the breakdown of our current valuations and our tax rates based off of each portion of the funding for our proportional share of the fire department budget every year. And what I want to point out, as we go through this, is highlighted in yellow there. You'll see that Westlake's revenue portion of our entire collected amount per year is $277,000 and 277,040. That'll be explained a little bit more as we go down the page. On the right, it's just another example and another provided breakout of how our expenses are calculated and budgeted for every year. Now, if we go down a little further on the page, you'll see the fire department debt. Okay, so this is assuming fiscal year 2024 to 2023, or sorry, 2031. We went ahead and removed our current year's budget, because we already have intent of paying for our current year's bond payment as budgeted. So if you're talking about the fire ILA, and you're talking about the town potentially taking over and acquiring all of this, has been discussed. Let me, let me back up a little bit. So the past year, when we began talking about this originally, the town's intent was to assume 100% of fire operations and budgeting. And what they were requesting at the time, when we first started to talk about amending the ILA, was utilizing any remaining cash balances that the district had to pay down towards the outstanding fire department debt for the fire station, and they would make up any difference. So if you take a little bit further down, you'll see our cash fund balance currently, as we project to be at the year-end, is roughly $774,000. So highlighted in red is assuming that our current debt holder will allow us to pay off the debt principal only and not require us to pay off any owed interest. Last year, when this was conversed with them, they agreed that if we made the final principal payment, they would not charge any outstanding interest. So currently, we're in conversation with them, and we haven't received anything firm yet. We're hopeful that if they do, obviously, that'll save the district and/or the town $57,655 by doing so. So if you take the potential $975,000 principal payment that we would end up making at the end of this fiscal year, September 1, and you subtract out our current cash balances, that would mean that the town would potentially have to come up with $200,435 to pay off that debt. If for some reason, worst-case scenario, they want us to pay all the remaining interest, and you subtract out your $774,000, essentially, the town would have to come up with $258,090. Does that all make sense to everyone?
What was the difference between 975, 774?
What was your 200,000?
$200,435.
Okay, so, and from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, but the reason they didn't want to do it is the revenue loss and then whatever additional cost didn't make sense, is that correct?
At the time, they were, so my understanding, you're talking about from the town's perspective, correct? My understanding was that they had some INS debt falling off, and so they were waiting until that fell off from that calendar year, fiscal year, with the intent of increasing their MNO this year, because their INS would be decreasing enough to where they could offset the expense. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's their business. If they have two cents that can fall off, then drop my taxes by two cents. And this should be a wash in my eyes. But again, that's.
And honestly, based off of our conversations, if, you know, you scroll up a little bit, you can see that the district MNO rate for fire is .05625. So essentially, we would decrease our tax rate by .05625, and the town would essentially increase theirs by .05625.
And they're going to lose.
Essentially, that's, that's the theory, but.
It would, it would be a little bit different based on the tax class.
It would be, it would be, and that's where I was fixing to get to, is there's a different tax class. They have, they're going to have a different portion of valuations. They would have a larger fund for their entire operations that this would fall into. So it's not necessarily saying that they're going to need .0625. That has still yet to be determined, and we'll start working through all of that. I'll get to some of that a little bit further down the page.
Okay, just to make a note that Stephen actually gave me this information earlier. The, you look at the Spartan pumper truck, that was 800 and something thousand, if you remember right. Probably have it off the top of your head, right?
It was, I think it was 770 something or 750, so around there, a little less than 800,000. The town paid, so back when we did the budget last year, we had enough in Gatsby. The 554,000 was paid out in Gatsby. And due to our effective rate, due to the, as far as our tax limit at 3.5%, we couldn't go anything higher without putting us over to potentially a petition to, for the tax rate there. So the town pitched in and paid the other difference there.
But we traded the other truck in.
So you see the one that I have super strike through here, the fire Pierce is a trade-in on that, that is correct.
What's the offset then? If it was 800,000 for the total purchase, or is that 800 after the trade-in?
That's after the trade-in. That was what the total balance was, 700 something was the total balance for everything.
I believe the original, their budget was 850. I think their truck came in at 805, and I'm just rough numbers. They were able to utilize some existing equipment off of the existing truck. That saved them 50,000. Then we got another credit on our existing fire truck for, I don't remember what the number was, but then that dropped that down, and it ended up being 740 something thousand, correct?
Do you know what we got for the other truck?
I can pull it through my computer in a minute. I don't have it off the top of my head now.
It'd be 880 minus the consideration for the other truck.
I want to say 20, but I could be completely off. That's around the discount that I've ever seen.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, you get what you get on the trade-in, but, you know, that truck will be, is probably operating in some other fire department right now. And it's worth, it was worth more than $20,000, obviously.
I could be wrong on the number. I can tell you here once I get back to my computer.
So basically, with our reserves, which is 550 something, and then the offset of the trade-in, and then the town made up the difference of the eight, whatever it was, 800,000. Okay. You don't, you don't know what the offset was by the town? Do you have that number?
I can tell you once I get back to my computer there. I just don't have it up here.
Okay, so I just want to make that note that as an asset to the mud, it's only 554301. But we actually, the town paid a portion of it, that's why it doesn't reflect the 800,000 number.
On our books, we're carrying the 554.
Okay.
We only show what we pay on the books.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
Okay, another question is, why are we talking about the town taking over the fire department when we have another meeting coming up to take, to basically get rid of the mud, which would include the fire department? It seems like there's overlap there.
Understood, this is a request by Mr. Brewster last month.
Yeah, I mean, to me, we should be talking about continue the management of the fire station and worry about the fire department taking it over, let the other.
Well, this, yeah, and this has been going on for two years at least.
I know, but right now, we're at a point where we're going to talk about, okay, is it good for the citizens as a whole to do away with the mud, which includes the fire department? So, you know, right now, you threw a number up there, out there would be, okay, 258,000. That's not even including the loss of the revenue of 277, is that correct?
I haven't gotten to that point yet. We kind of got off to where I was at.
Sorry to burst your bubble there.
Oh, no, I was, I was going to generally get to that, just to show you all. If we went down this path, that's been discussed with the town, then how that would affect that.
And that, that is going to be in Chris's numbers in the presentation.
Chris is only looking at water and wastewater, he's not including fire as part of that feasibility study.
Yeah.
Correct, it's only water, wastewater. This has been in conversation since last year. Originally, we were planning on making this transition late last year. But again, the town requested to delay it one year, and that agreement ends this year. So that's why we're bringing it up now.
Yeah.
There is a pretty significant timeline that we have to stick to to make it happen.
Yeah, I thought Chris was doing everything as a whole.
No, no, fire is not included, this is only water, wastewater.
Okay, so who's going to, is the town going to tell us how they're going to make up for that loss of revenue?
Let me, let me go through the rest of this, and then maybe I can answer some of those questions for you.
Okay.
Okay, so going back to the middle of the page, where you. Okay, so going back to the middle of the page, where you can see that the Westlake's revenue, the Westlake tax revenue of 22.03% is $277,000, okay, roughly. So if the fire debt is paid for in full, when the town takes this over, and we're assuming these numbers don't change static, $200,000 of what we collect goes to the debt itself. So that would make up for the loss of revenue on the Westlake side by $200,000. So essentially, the town would have to come up with $77,000 worth of additional revenue, whether in their tax rate or property valuations. So that's gonna be one key piece of it.
Would you say that one more time?
Okay. The $277,000, that's on the middle of the page there. That is how much we collect from Westlake's portional area.
Okay, a year, per year.
Per year.
I'm gonna get to this.
All I'm giving you is the facts, right?
Keep going.
Don't, don't beat the messenger. So $277,040 is our current year revenue from across the highway. If you take the debt portion alone, for the debt itself, out of the equation, let's say we pay for it all in cash, $200,000 goes away right off of what is needed to be collected. So when the town takes this over and the debt is no longer in the equation, they essentially have about $77,000 to make up.
What you're saying is the debt, meaning the bond, if the bond is paid off,
Yes.
the required amount, now comes from Westlake of 277, would only be 77.
Roughly, roughly. So that's why I showed that proportional value to you from the Westlake side, because that's been the big topic of discussion is, how are they gonna make up for that loss of revenue?
Okay, now, now my big reveal here, that's one year.
Understood.
Are they gonna come up with the 277 the next year?
The 277 is no longer relevant if the debt is paid for. If the debt is still outstanding, then either the agreement's gonna be that we continue to pay off the debt and tax, or we pay it all off in full.
But this is 22.03 of the fire station budget, the fire department budget, correct?
From Westlake, yes, our proportional area.
So you're gonna take 22% of the fire department budget away in year two. Year one, they use our reserves.
Year one, it's gonna go down $200,000 if the debt is paid for.
Our budget will decrease.
That's the fire station debt.
The fire budget will decrease in its entirety by $200,000 by wiping out the debt alone.
Okay, so the big portion, 200,000, is the debt using the reserves that we have.
That's correct. That's assuming
How are they gonna get the reserves back up again?
That's up to them to determine.
Okay, yeah.
That's up to them to determine. Now, we show Gatsby transfers in here, so we, we have been setting aside and will continue to set aside reserve replacements for the fire truck. My understanding is the town has a similar process. I don't know the details of their system and how it's set up, but they have something similar, and I would assume that they do something as far as a replacement program, or it may be a future bond. That's up to the town to determine.
Okay, and, I mean, again, I'm all for whatever works best for the citizens. So if they can show me how they're gonna have a reserve in case they need a truck, an ambulance, equipment, or whatever, how they're gonna have reserves set aside, which we have 774,000. We use reserves 500 and something to buy the new truck, correct?
Well, we had 500 and something set aside in Gatsby. So we didn't, we didn't pull any from the un, the 774 you see is undesignated reserves.
But what I'm getting at is we, Gatsby is like a reserve account.
Yes.
Okay, we had been building that account up based on replacement schedules of the fire trucks or equipment that's needed. So the town is gonna have to convince me as a representative of the citizens, their customers, mud customers, how are they gonna compensate for what we've been building in reserves? And then also make up for the shortfall of 77,000 per year.
Understood.
Because they're using our reserves of 774, which is a pretty good chunk of money to buy down the, the station debt, right? And that's not, the number you just said didn't include if they charge us interest or something, or don't allow us to pay down. So again, whatever's best for the citizens to do this, but, you know.
I think I heard their reserve, I think I heard a report or something the other day that their reserves are over 50%.
58% based off of
80% of their annual budget or something they have in reserves.
It was their audit report.
Yeah.
58%. So, okay, so now, with that being said, let's get down to the bottom. If you'll see, there's a potential transfer timeline, and this is the pretty, this is a fairly critical piece of this. And so as you're well aware, just like we do, we sit around and we wait until Denton County provides us with preliminary tax valuations. So this next month, we're gonna start receiving preliminary tax valuations. And then district and town staff will start working on draft budget calculations. Now, we're gonna go ahead and continue to potentially have a draft of the fire department sitting, sitting in line with or without the fire department being involved. As we start a budget process, we're gonna create a budget with and a budget without the fire. Because we have to plan either way.
Our side of the street.
We're gonna go ahead and continue down that path until we're told otherwise to do so. A few critical dates, yes.
The, the question was, my understanding was, it was put on hold until we got the valuations, because the town wanted to see the valuations before they made a commitment.
Yes, because they wanna make sure that they're not gonna see some sort of unforeseen tax hike to all the residents. So they're trying to keep their tax rate as low as possible while assuming these variables. So again, I would, I would recommend the same thing if we're doing, doing it the other way. Okay, so back down the bottom of the page, May to June, we're gonna be looking at preliminary valuations. District and town staff are gonna start working on populating draft budget calculations. That'll help us to determine what those rates are gonna look like or potentially look like. July 19th is going to be critical because after consulting with Emily, our legal counsel, will, the district will have to take those assets and declare them as surplus and create a resolution and have that signed per Texas Water Code. Now, my intent is to go ahead and potentially have a draft ILA that we can also discuss at the same July 19th meeting. That gives us enough time for the town to come up with what they're thinking. And then we can back into more information that we receive from the bonding company to find out if we're gonna have to pay interest or not.
Okay, draft ILA, meaning draft ILA to proceed forward with the transfer, as well as a draft ILA to, if it doesn't go forward, because we need something to execute. If it doesn't go forward, we have to execute something before the end of September, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. And so, again, month ago, month and a half ago, I reiterated with the town manager at the time, are y'all still planning on going this path? Yes, that is the intent. We're just waiting for valuations to come in, and I feel like they're gonna be able to provide a little bit more solid yes or no. Make sense? Okay, so July 19th, we'll likely come back, assuming everybody's in agreeance to do so with a district surplus resolution, and then we'll also have a draft ILA for discussion. July 25th is when we'll receive certified property valuations. District and town staff will work on finalizing their tax rates and calculations to be presented. August 6th is pretty much our deadline. So by August 16th, we need to have the finalized fire ILA approved by both governing bodies. That way, it gives us enough time to receive the funds from the town. So if, if the town is paying 200,000 or 258,000, we'll need to send them an invoice, give them time to, to provide that payment so we can get it all in the queue by August 25th and get it prepared to pay that debt off. Now, once the debt is paid for, which is due on September 1st, between now and then, the majority of the closing document information will have already been populated within the draft ILA. So between paying off the debt payment and September 30th, all the closing documents will be taken care of, so October 1, the transfer can take effect, essentially turn over the keys and start changing and modifying insurance providers, that type of thing.
Okay, here's a question. Why wouldn't we, without the ILA, why wouldn't we wanna just pay the building off if we can save on the interest?
You all have the authority and ability to do so if you so desire.
I mean, that, that would eliminate this step on doing that, and we'd probably save money.
I understand. Now,
Leave you without a reserve.
Okay, so
Leaves you without a reserve.
Well, so
Leaves you without a reserve. You're using all the reserves to pay it off.
Don't have any more note to, to pay off on the building.
But you'd have no reserves for anything else that comes up.
You do have to be careful, though, with the working capital. We'll have nothing left, and considering it takes, it's not until after December do we actually get revenue in for the fire station, because it's all done by tax, so.
That's why the ILA has to be in place, because essentially, you have to remember, we have to keep two to three months' worth of working capital in reserves. So in order for this to take place, it has to all be in line, knowing that the town is gonna take over operations October 1. So that way, if we deplete all of our funds and cash reserves on September 1, October 1, the town will be ready to take over.
With no reserves.
However they set up their reserves is gonna be up to them.
It sounds like to me the ball's in their court to come up with financial numbers.
Yes, yes.
Show it to us.
Correct.
And say, okay, this isn't gonna jeopardize the citizens. And then one Pandora's box that hadn't been opened yet is, guess what? You know, the fire station goes into the town's control. They don't service Westlake anymore.
Correct.
Well, Westlake has been paying, according to this, 22.03 of our assets. So are they gonna come across legally and say, hey, what are you gonna give us?
So right now, our legal counsel is in the process of verifying that there is nothing hanging out there that could potentially come back and bite anyone. As of our understanding, there was never a fire ILA constructed between district and Westlake. But again, legal counsel just received more information today on that, but they already been told to verify that there's not gonna be no repercussions.
We didn't need a fire ILA because they were part of our district.
Understood. Legal is looking into that question for you, yes.
Well, again, the town's gonna have to come up with some solid numbers. Okay, how are you gonna deal with the reserves after you inherit it? If they're saying they have 2% INS, I guess it was you said, right?
I don't remember. Is it two cent difference? That was last year.
We, we've asked them this year, and we have, we asked them about what, what their plans are, and they're not really sure. They're kind of tabling it until they can get somebody in place to answer that question.
Wade brought that up in one of our strategic committees, I think, or the second one or something like that. It's like, okay, me as a resident, where's the two cents now, you know?
And I just go back to what they've said, is that they were gonna be lowering their INS rate needs, so they were gonna increase the maintenance and operations side to offset it.
Okay.
Okay, so any other questions on this? I know that that's pretty convoluted, but we took our best effort to try to get you all up to date as much as possible.
Nice presentation.
Yeah.
Stephen, good job.
Thank you.
Well done.
Nice presentation.
Okay. The system went to sleep, so we're moving on.
Let's say 77,000 looks alive.
We don't have, we, I don't think we can take any action because we don't have any numbers that you can say, you know, get some numbers from the town.
What's this?
But there's no action on the ILA contract.
So there's discussion and possible action amended and restated in our local cooperation agreement.
I got to page two.
And I'm ready to make that motion.
There should be, everybody should have an extra document up there regarding this item.
Got to page two, yeah.
Basically, what this will do, by making a motion tonight, would put this into motion with us, with the town, to continue to move forward and proceed with this from a board's perspective. This would also give us the necessary means that we feel like we need to provide our financial advisor so that they know that the district is serious about potentially paying off the debt this fiscal year.
But no final decision on
That's correct.
Okay.
This is essentially going to give us the authority in legal counsel to start working and papering and doing draft documentation with the town to make this happen this fiscal year, assuming the town can determine how their finances work in everyone's favor in Trophy Club.
When this motion says prepare an interlocal agreement, that would, it does not execute that agreement. It only prepares it, correct?
That has been reviewed and revised by legal counsel.
Yeah, I just wanted, yeah.
Yes. That's their recommendation for motion.
Yeah, just prepare, make sure it says prepare and no action taken on it.
Do you have a number on
Did you have a motion?
No, I'm ready to move.
Is there, is there a number on how much the cost of the prepared agreement?
Uh, it would be based off the hourly rate. There's nothing extraneous based, based off my conversations with Emily today. We, we have enough funding in our current legal line item to cover the expenses moving forward on this year's project.
Can I give a small update too for President Carr for your questions? The, sorry, the fire truck, it was 835, so 835,000. We did receive 85,000 on trade-in credit for the prior unit. Then minus our discount, using Sourcewell there, we got to 730 was the total cost of the vehicle.
So did our 85, is that rolled into the 554?
So the 85 came off the top, so that left a 730 at the end. So the vehicle originally was 835, 835,000. Minus the credit, minus our discount, the total vehicle was 730.
And stuff like that, right?
ARB.
So again, are, you said we used about five something in reserves, right?
554, yeah, on that sheet, five is a
301?
554, 301, correct.
Okay, so shouldn't our asset value be the 85 plus the 554?
So you get the trade-in value. You would salvage, when we salvage the vehicle, that trade-in goes towards the salvage. So we collect salvage, we get like the trade-in on the other vehicle.
Salvage comes in as a revenue, other revenue.
Okay.
It's just not done yet because it's as of 930. We didn't take possession to the vehicle till this fiscal year. So technically, the trade-in acquisition happens this year.
But again, it, the value of an asset should be, any, any, it should be whatever it is, the discounts and stuff after that.
So there is another value. The other value, this is just what's on our books for depreciation. The other value, it's a 730 that's hitting in the asset. 530, 554 is what's depleting down for depreciation and what's left over.
I, I don't agree with that, but I'll go with what you said. And you know what I'm saying, right?
I do understand what you're saying, for the trade-in value.
It should be 85 more because that's what the asset was worth. We just had a trade-in.
That's correct.
When you buy a car and you have a $10,000 trade-in, the value is still 10,000 more.
So the original value, yes, the original value is still 730, which it has that trade-in with it.
But the town paid a portion of that.
That's correct.
What did the town pay?
175, 698.
So it should be the total cost minus the 175. That should, that's what our asset should be.
That's correct.
But that's not what it, because 85 is somewhere else.
Well, it's with the other vehicle until it gets disposed.
Yeah, okay. I'll have to check on that. Okay, we have a motion by Vice President Ben Brewster. Is it Benjamin Brewster or Ben Brewster?
It's Benjamin.
Okay, Benjamin Brewster, okay.
Middle initial?
You want my middle name?
Sure, yeah. Social Security number, driver's license.
I move that we direct the general manager and general counsel to prepare an interlocal agreement with the town of Trophy Club that would transfer the fire station and fire assets to the town after the district has paid the bonds and declared those fire assets and property surplus.
And this is to prepare?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Benjamin Brewster and a second by Tracy Hunter. Any discussion? I see none, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, okay. Moving on. Okay, executive session. We wanna go into executive session, is that correct, for a couple items?
Yes, item B.
Jen, item eight. Pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may consult with its attorney in executive session on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act or to seek advice of counsel on legal matters involving pen, involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers. A, consult with legal counsel to secure legal advice concerning joint strategic planning with the town of Trophy Club. B, consult with legal counsel relating to the respective roles, responsibility, and duties of board, including potential legal issues associated with email communication by board members. It is now 740, I'll call it, and we're going into executive session. Okay, it is 804, and we're back into regular session from executive session. We're on agenda item number nine, consider an act regarding items discussed in executive session. There's no action on that item, so we'll move on to agenda item number 10. Items for future agenda. Do we have any? Okay, obviously, we have the, what will be an ongoing Okay, obviously we have the, what will be an ongoing town discussion on I L A.
Uh, yes, I'll, more than likely we'll have another discussion to continue to talk about the fire I L A and any other uh, items necessary. And we're gonna make sure that we bring back the um, cash reserve policy for discussion and uh, selecting budget committee members next month as well.
Correct. Okay, anybody have any needs for anything else?
Nope.
Anything, Mr.?
No.
Doug? Tracy?
No.
Okay.
We may have a report.
Okay. What?
We may have a report on our meeting.
Okay. Yeah, uh, good point. Uh, update on our meeting.
The one, the one from Friday?
Yeah. Okay, you have that? Okay, good, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to. Regular session agenda number eleven, set future meeting dates, May seventeenth. Twenty twenty three at six thirty P M, Central Standard Time. Anybody have any problem with that date? Vacations, anyone? Okay. Okay, uh, I see no further agendas, so we will uh. Adjourn at eight oh six.
Well done.
Thank you very much.